Welcome, everybody. This is the Pownell Planning Commission regular meeting on the 21st of January already, 2020. Just very quickly, I'd like everybody to introduce themselves, please. And if we start with our guest, Mr. Sullivan down there.
My name's Jim Sullivan. I am with the Bennington County Regional Commission, working with Planning Commission on their land use by law update.
Go ahead, Ronnie.
Ron Visza.
Sid Smillers.
Mike Slattery, Chairman.
Jim Winchester, PC number.
Negan Randall.
Barbara Tru Webber.
Thank you all. Just so people know, home knows. I didn't get any volunteers from anybody, so if you don't mind taking over.
I will be the note taker. Happy to do it.
Well, I won't get too far ahead of you here.
Yeah, please don't. Let me get my coat off.
I was the secretary at the last DRB meeting. He's this, this is payback now. So, yeah, let's just take a 20-second recess while I find my bag and take out things like pencils and pens and stuff. We gotta wrap together here. Now, except for Jessica, I haven't heard from anybody else. And some tease, I would say John Bushe's probably got.
Other things I was.
Pretty, pretty good excuse, the poor guy. Man, oh, man. That was just brutal to hear that. It really was. That's a scary, scary thing, all of us, to burn wood in the winter time and everything. Thinking of you guys. Okay. Let's review the tonight's agenda. Four parts, just starting with the approval of this agenda. And then we need to approve the minutes of December 17th, 2019. If we can, we'll see who was present and if we have a quorum of those that are present. We'll hear from Mr. Sullivan from the BCRC. And then we're gonna talk to, well, excuse me. We're just gonna hear a few minutes from Barbara Tru Webber in regards to the Energy Committee. If everybody could change that and when I get a motion, if we can motion reflecting that change.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in good shape. Let's take a, let's take a few minutes and look at the 17th. And Jim, I know you felt bad that we excluded you from that meeting a week before Christmas or so.
I abstained.
Okay.
You went there. We don't have a quorum again.
Why, you weren't listed as there or not there. Were you? What's the matter with you?
Jimmy, yes, you're on there.
Where is he?
No, he's not. No, he's not.
I don't see him.
November, oh, that's November 19th?
Yeah, so November, no.
December 17th.
I gave you December 17th here. Why don't you just, here. I just, the two things I handed out. Okay, let's write in Mr. Winchester, who was unavoidably detained somewhere.
I called you.
No, 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 you're just gonna do the budget. There's a nasty note. Oh, I, we talked.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I think that's the same reason.
I didn't, I didn't say.
About the budget. He worked on the budget.
I didn't say too much bad about you when I got here. I was.
I've got thick skin.
She said, where's the mayor?
It's okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, would you tell me where we are and what we're doing so I can take accurate?
I'm terribly sorry. We're just now spending a few minutes reviewing the minutes and then I'm gonna ask for a motion or.
The minutes of what, December 17th?
December 17th.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the minutes of December 17th as submitted.
With, with the exception of adding Jim Winchester's name to Board Member's absence.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion? We have a second? Got it, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstained.
We're abstaining.
Standing.
Yeah. Wait a minute.
We don't have a quorum.
We don't have a quorum.
That's what I was just wondering.
Didn't I just say I'm gonna look to see if we had a quorum? You voted twice, so we're all set. Yeah, we're good. Okay, so we have to strike that motion in favor of tabling this until we have.
I move we table it until we have a quorum.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It takes a two-thirds vote. Sorry.
It's good that we have a parliamentarian.
But it's of the people present.
You've been taking classes?
Wow, this is unanimous.
Okay. Jim, if you can bear with us just for a second, I'm, we're just gonna, we're gonna talk about the. We're gonna wanna talk, have Barbara talk a little bit about the Energy Committee.
I can talk about that, too.
Yes, please do.
I wanna preface it by.
However, it says, presentation by Barbara Tru Webber regarding the Economic Committee.
I know, but.
We just changed.
But we changed it in the motion.
We scratched through that and put Energy below it.
Yeah.
We moved to do so.
Thank you. I need all the help.
Ronnie was taking notes till you got here, so we're okay. We're all right. I talked to Barbara, I forget, like, a month ago, and she mentioned to me that she was considering not continuing on the, on the committee. I'll let her tell you the reasons why. I didn't argue with you at the time. I knew exactly.
Do you want to argue with me?
Do not, do not. I respect a thousand percent your, your decision and know exactly why you made it. But why don't you go ahead and just tell us a little bit about what's been going on?
There's only ever been two people on the Energy Committee. Bill Barnes, Megan's brother-in-law, and myself. And it's been slow-going for us to even get organized and move forward with anything that resembles energy action of any kind. Now, the Energy Committee is supposed to be a committee of citizens appointed by the Select Board. Some places don't have Select Board appointment, that they're just sort of a free-ranging citizens committee, which Jim can talk more about if he wants to. So, the idea is to, first of all, save the municipality or the township money on their energy bills. So, how can we, what, what sort of recommendations can we make? Or what sort of action can we take that would reduce the energy bill for the municipality? And there have been a lot of different things done, changing street lighting to LEDs, getting new machinery for the wastewater plant that doesn't take as much energy. I think it's Montpelier that has a revolving fund so that people can withdraw money from that to, to implement projects. And then the, the money that is saved on energy bills goes back into that fund. So, there's all kinds of ideas. There's all kinds of things happening with that. Bill and I met a couple of times with Mike Walker. And he was very supportive and, and very informative. And Bill and I were really depending on him for his expertise and for his knowledge of, say, the grant funding resources and that sort of thing. And so, when this, shall we call it a challenge arises in the town, it was really perplexing to me and the fact that Michael was, and, and I had worked very well with Michael and he was very supportive and very forthcoming. And the fact that he was fired for reasons that seemed incomprehensible to me, I wondered how I was gonna continue in the, the path of doing energy reduction stuff.
Service providers are getting contractors and potentially fuel dealers to get involved in delivering weatherization and efficiency services. And alternative heating services. It might be, it might be a heavy lift, but we're committed to try. But to, to get that information out in the local communities is really, you know, we. We've been more effective in the last year or so since, you know, Madison worked with us to help.
Yeah.
Form energy committees and she's, she's moved on now from her Vista position and so Allison Stroll and I are kind of teaming up to try to keep the momentum going. Um, there's also, um, so we're, we're actually, you know, we have a, a round table coming up next week to get as many local energy committee. Members together as we can to kind of plan out a schedule for the coming year.
Okay.
So it's, um.
So it's easier if you have an energy committee or coordinator to get that information out that you need to get out.
So much, yeah, there's so many things that are in place. It's not like, it's not like, you know, we're trying to figure out how to do weatherization. Or if, or, or, or alternative heating systems. We know how to do them. We need help getting the information.
Word out.
To people about the incentives and the rebates and how you go about who to talk to, who the, the contacts are. Um, and so that's, that's kind of our reliance on folks, you know, like Barbara and other people in the local communities. So.
Yeah.
So I, I, I can, uh, you know, appreciate that it's, it's hard to kind of get up and get running with this stuff, especially if you've got some discord, not position. But, um, I, whether, um, you continue or somebody else, I, I'm, I'm just here to say, somebody in Pownell needs to.
You're here to cheer.
Be our, be our contact and we will give you what support we can.
Yeah.
And by the way, I know that the Bennington, uh, energy committee is considering recommending, uh, energy coordinator for Bennington. And so our, our conversation was about sharing a coordinator with some.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Regional, um, positions. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they do go ahead with that, um, we might consider.
Sure. Towns share ZAs, they share a host of different things. So that would be, uh, that'd be a good idea. And then, you know, then combining resources on that. Could help.
What kind of does, do you know what kind of numbers we're talking about?
No.
Asking for?
Do you know what coordinators, part-time coordinators?
I really, I really don't. And I'm not actually sure what the, any details of what the Bennington.
I, I don't think there are details.
Are considering. Um, you know, I mean, there's, there's a range of different things you can do from, you know, full-time to part-time to.
Yeah.
You know, we, we've defaulted to volunteer committees being supported by some very part-time effort at the regional commission, which is a lot better than we had. Uh, five years ago.
Yeah.
So, but, uh.
Right. Still not ideal, but better.
Yeah.
Uh, we do know that energy coordinators, um, make their salary back in energy savings. So.
That would be the best practice, right? That would be the goal. Good. Thanks for sharing all that with us. It's, uh, I think it's important for people at home to hear that, to know what's going on and, um. And let's, um, let's work with the board in, in March and we can go, I'll go with you to make that presentation. Based on the, how important that was. We spent a lot of time on that section.
We did.
In the town plan.
We did.
Well, but, uh, didn't, uh, Brian Harris said he wanted to rewrite the town plan.
Regarding economic development. I don't know where that came from, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna go there now. I'll ask that question Thursday night at the select board meeting. Thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
Keep, keep us posted. All right, Jim, sorry. Thank, and I, I knew your input would be valuable there. That's why bumped her up in the agenda.
Oh, no, that, that's good. I, you know, people know me know that, um, I tend, I, I tend to, um. Jump right in when it comes to discussions about energy. So, um, I'm good, I'm good with that.
I don't think so. Good.
So I, I kinda wanted to do a, a little catch-up, um, where, where we are with the, with the bylaws and, um.
Yes, please.
Yeah. And then, and then, um, and then I have a few, uh, specific. So I'll give a broad overview of some stuff and then, and then, and then there's a few specific, uh, questions that I, I thought we could discuss tonight. Because my, my objective would really be by the February meeting, the next meeting, to have a, a full draft. Of, of the bylaw. And I mean, we're really pretty close now, but I, I got a few lingering issues that I need to button down. So.
So just to back up, in, in December, you sent us three of the last four sections that you had been working on, if I'm not mistaken. I haven't looked at them since the first day that, that they came out. So you sent them to everybody from what I could see. So.
Tried to.
So at least with your, yeah, I know it's crazy down here, right? Well, I still can't get everybody to, uh, have a group email. Uh, I can't get all those messages out. So that, it's there. Everybody should now that we're rejuvenated in the new year, get back, read those. And incorporate what we're gonna, big picture stuff we're gonna talk about tonight. And then try and be ready to go over that draft or the majority of it in February. And then maybe start talking about public hearings and things if we wrap things up in March or April.
Yeah, I, I would, it, yeah, there've been a lot, uh, we've, um, proposing a lot of changes to the, to the bylaw. And I, I think it's gonna take, um, you know, two or three meetings to get.
To, to button those up.
To, to review, once we have a full draft to kind of go from the beginning to the end, to make sure everybody's comfortable with everything that's in there and.
Yeah.
To discuss it. So, uh, I, I don't necessarily wanna predict just when you'll be ready to go to.
Yeah.
A, a hearing, but I, I would like to, like I said, my, my objective would be to have before your February meeting delivered to you. A complete draft.
And I wasn't trying to pin you down, by the way.
I, 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 I don't mind. We could, we could, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm retiring in two and a half years, you know, we can just.
We can just keep it going. We can wrap this thing up in two and a quarter years.
Let somebody else take it on. But, um, so, so if you want, I'll just, I'll give you a real quick. So what I sent out in December, um, and the most of the work that I had put into it, if you remember our, no, the November, was it the November meeting? We spent, Michael Batchory came to the meeting in my house and we had a lot of discussion about the, um, flood hazard and river corridor regulations. So with that, that kind of gave you guys a, a sense of it and, 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 um, uh, you know, what that was about. And so what, what I did was I took the templates that we got from the state that Michael had, um, gotten. And turned them into a new section six of the bylaw. So section six is entitled flood hazard and river corridor districts.
Do we have that?
Hmm?
Did, did you distribute that to us?
I sent it out, I hope. I, I know I sent it to everybody, whether or not everyone received it. It was.
If not, I'll make sure Jessica gets everybody copies.
It stated at the, the top, the, the draft, December seventeenth.
Right.
So that, December seventeenth draft has this new section six in it. Now, sections six point one through six point four of that are the, um, the flood, um, well, six one is purpose. But six two through six four is the, the flood hazard area regulations, which is something that you've had for, for some time. But this is the.
State regs.
Yeah, the, the, so the, these are the regulations that you are essentially required to have for the state, for the town to be. For any, anyone who lives in or owns a business in the town, um, to be eligible for the, um, the FEMA flood insurance program.
Right.
So, you know, the, the mapping is all based on the, the FEMA flood insurance rate maps. The standards are all kind of dictated by the state requirements. What I did was I, I took those and massaged them into your bylaw, I hope, to, to make it fit with the rest of your bylaw. So the references were all correct and tied together. Um, so, you know, I, you should take a look at it and see if there's any, you know, red flags in there. That really cause you some concern. And there might be some different ways we can, we can treat some of these things. But for the most part, you know, that, that's kind of, uh, uh, you know, between the state and FEMA. Um, what they say, you kind of have to have to be eligible for the, the, the state program. Now, the, the rest of that section, um, six, six point five, um, I don't know if I think it just. Six point five and, um, on through the rest of it. Um, is, is a section that deals with river corridors. And that, so that's a different animal, although related certainly to the special flood hazard area. It's a different, technically a different area and a different, slightly different issue. So.
Talks about building and expansion in the corridors.
It talks about a lot of, a lot of stuff. And it, but the river corridor area isn't necessarily the same as the flood hazard area. As, as Michael pointed out, the flood hazard area is areas that flood with a certain probability of certain frequency. Um, the river corridor area is an area that, you know, where the land is susceptible to. Like fluvial erosion. So, so where things will wash away as the river changes its meanders over time. And, and those things aren't covered by the, the FEMA stuff, but they're in Vermont. Uh, I think they're, they're more important. You know, most of the damage from Irene, as was pointed out, was really, you know.
Changing course.
Erosion related as, as opposed to, you know, flood inundation. So you're not required to have that in your, in your bylaws at all, but if you do have it. And, and you have it and it meets the, the state standards, um, then you're, you're, um, the, you, the town receives certain benefits. Like higher reimbursement rates, um, you know, if there, if there's a, you know, a, a declared disaster and, and you get some reimbursement.
Oh, I see.
So you get reimbursed at a slightly higher rate if you have river corridor regulations. So the, the template that we got from the state was, I thought, really, um, really pretty complex.
Okay.
So I, I did what I could to, to.
Boil it down.
Boil it down to the essential elements and make it work in your bylaw.
Maps for what in Pownell is the flood hazard and what is the river corridor?
Yeah, and I, I had thought about bringing those, um, to tonight's meeting because Michael has some made up, but, um.
We have current ones in our, in our bylaw book.
Yeah, like your current bylaws, we should have the, the special flood hazard area. I, I don't know if they have the river corridors.
Stuff Michael had was a lot more in-depth about the river corridor studies.
Yeah, so.
Because I don't think we ever adopted river corridor planning in the past.
No, we, we, you, you haven't yet. I think it's in your plan to, to do it. But, but the.
It is.
But what I, what we would do is, um, you know, when I get the full draft together as part of the mapping component.
The maps would be part of it.
Yeah, well, they have to be because they're really districts, you know. So, um, so we wanna be clear on that. The river corridor isn't a really expansive area. I mean, you guys are mostly, you know, um. Your, your issues are mostly with the Housick River.
Right.
And, and the river corridor areas, um, you know, aren't.
It's part where it S's here?
Yeah, so, so where you see, yeah, and I don't know if the river corridor is spelled out on that, but, but where you get those, where you get those meander movements in particular. Those are areas that if they're flat, you know, they, they suggest that the river will eventually eat into that area. So, so there's special restrictions and regulations.
We had quite a study done seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, so there's, there's good information. There's good maps on it. Um, you know, whether or not you agree with them, but there's good maps on it. And, you know, one of the big issues was, um, that we talked about at the November meeting was, um, uh. The, the viability for certain development scenarios. It's racetrack property, given the flood hazard and river corridor stuff. But that's something I wanted to talk about a little bit. But so, so that was the far and away the most work I did, um, between, you know, the November and the December drafts. Is that section six. And, um, we'll, we'll walk through it, um, when we go over the whole thing. Uh, but take a look at it with a.
Especially six point five on.
Yeah, 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 because that, you know, you don't have to have that in your bylaw. I mean, you know, cause it's. Where it, where you do have river corridor designation, it's pretty restrictive. Um, you know, especially outside of designated village centers and things. It's, it, it very quite restrictive on what you can do with development. I mean, one would argue for good reason, you know, because you don't wanna allow or encourage development in a place where, you know, it could be washed away. But it is pretty restrictive.
River next year.
So, so, you know, take, take a, take a close look at that section in particular. A lot of the other stuff that, that's in the bylaws is kind of like, you know, maybe a, a new take on, uh, you know, old business, you know, you know. Permitted uses and setbacks and all that kind of stuff. Uh, but this is, uh, this is a little bit new and different.
New in here, yeah.
So I, I would encourage you to take a really close look at section six, especially, I said, six point five and the river corridor standards.
And we can make, you know, then we can see if it makes sense for Pownell to have it.
Yep. And, and then, um, so most recently, I'll just, I'll just pass this up. This, I had a very little bit of work to do, um, to finish the, the, the drafting of the main body of the bylaw. There were like five short sections at the end of the bylaw and I, I, um, merged them into one, um, section nine. And so that's the bottom of that page, I think sixty-six over on the sixty-seven is, but it, it's just administrative stuff about. You know, uh, amendments and interpretation and validity and amendment. No, nothing terribly exciting at all. But the, the exciting thing about that was that was the last part of the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah. You saw light at the end of the tunnel.
That's the end. That is the end. Now, that said, there's a couple of other things that, um, it promised you. So this, this one I'll pass around. This is my working draft and it's still, but I wanted to give you an idea of what it would look like of the new land use matrix.
What, what you need for an application in our.
Well, all this, all this is, is basically, remember that, that in the current bylaw, there's many, many pages.
Oh, okay.
Of districts and uses and stuff like that. So. We've kind of tried, I've kind of tried to boil that down and put like in which districts, which uses are permitted. And what the approvals look like. Is it an administrative approval? Is it an approval with just site plan? Is it a permitted use with site plan approval required? Or is it a conditional use?
And you have it down to five zones.
Well, yeah, cause I'm, I am assuming, and that was, um, something to talk about, um, that we're, we're merging the village and commercial. Um, and, uh, there's another zone question I have, but that's for now. So again, I, I still had to, I have to reconcile a couple of things here. And there's some blank spots which are, you know, there, there's some things in the bylaw that, um, you know, you don't need a permit for. And so, you know, if, I, I'm a little concerned if people are looking through here, they might say, oh, you're not allowing agriculture, you know, but.
Right.
You don't need a permit for agricultural use. And similarly, you know, we had the forest district. And all the uses in the forest district are kind of forest-related, but in most places that's allowed by right too. So I, I haven't quite figured out how to incorporate all those things. Um, and there's, uh, I thought it was. We did a pretty good job in making sure that everything matched right, but there were a few things like in the multifamily dwellings and, and, um. A couple of things where I, I have to make sure that I, everything matches up well.
All of your conditional uses require site plan approval?
Yes. Yes.
Makes sense.
Yeah. And we, we've written that, we've written that in so that, um, to try to expedite things so that, um. You know, that whether it's permit, a permitted use that requires site plan approval or a conditional use that requires site plan approval. Um, you know, it's still something that can be reviewed by the, the development review board in one hearing. Um, it's just a, uh, with a conditional use, there's, uh, there's additional conditional use criteria that are, are thrown into the mix. And we really done as much as we could to try to, um, cause like you guys have all, all expressed an interest in, um, trying to. You know, make the, the development process more predictable and, and understandable. So try to really limit the conditional uses.
Yeah.
And make more things permitted uses with site plan approval.
Yeah.
Required. So, you know, again, I, I know I got a couple of things I gotta work out in this, but, um. And I'll add some explanations to the end of it, but take a look and see if.
Yeah.
You like the format and if it makes sense to you. Um, so we can talk about that too at the next meeting.
Well, huge improvement over the twenty-eight pages it takes up in the current bylaw.
I do like the format. I think it's easy to.
Yeah, nice.
User-friendly.
We can, uh, we can even alphabetize it easily enough. I just put them down in the order that I came to them, but, um, we can make it clear. But it's, you know, hopefully it makes it clear. It's like, okay, I can go in this district for this use. I can just go get a permit from the zoning administrator, or I have to, uh, submit an application for a site plan approval. And then you have to refer back to the bylaw to see just what you need to include in that. But hopefully it makes it.
Much easier.
Lot more straightforward.
Jim, would, um, an accessory dwelling unit, would a tiny house be safe? Cause I just read an article.
Oh, I saw that. You sent it to me.
Yeah, I was saying that tiny houses are becoming very popular with seniors. Um, and.
Granny pods.
Granny pods, exactly. And so, you know, I thought, wow.
Get you one.
We have some tiny houses that so, uh.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of.
Working on, on three forty-six and.
Yeah, a lot of people talk about, um.
Where, where's it?
That, doing a tiny house development?
There was one down at the flyhouse.
The one right down at the.
Very nice.
Right down the.
Oh, Doug?
End of three forty-six. Yeah.
His last name.
Community, yeah, Doug Kaminsky.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're, um, fascinating innovation. I mean, I, you know.
But I, but I'm just asking, would that be considered an accessory dwelling unit?
So, so under the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, that has to be an accessory dwelling unit. So it would be, it would be on a property where there is already, uh, like a one or two family residential.
The mother-in-law apartment over the garage.
Some people would use them that way.
Yeah, so.
They would use them for grandma, uh, in the back.
So if, but if you had, it, the way the bylaw's written now, and the way that most towns are interpreting this. Is it like, if you have a, um, if you have like a, a vacant lot and you decide to. Your new house on the vacant lot is gonna be a tiny house.
Yeah.
Um, you know, four hundred square feet or whatever. It's.
It's smaller than that.
Well, conceivably you do it, but you would have to do it the same way you would do any other house. So you, it would be treated the same as if it were an eight thousand square foot mansion.
And what if there were like, uh, a collection of them, like a, um, like a trailer park with tiny houses?
You could do that under our new, our new planned unit development provisions in the bylaws, I would think. Yeah. I've seen some really interesting, um, you know.
It sounded like a way to attract people.
Tiny house, um, communities or, or subdivisions. They're, they're pretty interesting.
I mean, they're very cute and, um.
Yeah, some of them are developed in a way that they, you know, that they share certain things, like they, they maybe have shared parking or, you know, community building or things like that. Cause if you use your tiny house as, uh, you know, basically a place to sleep and cook your meals, maybe you want a little bit some other.
Yeah.
You want, you want a little, occasionally you wanna get out of your four hundred square feet and still be inside.
Particularly if you're married.
So, so if there's, if, you know, so sometimes these little developments will have like a little, you know, medium-sized community, um, building too. So you can go down there and hang out, watch, you know. So anyway, so I think, I think it's a great idea, but there's nothing in your bylaw that prevents tiny houses or prevents tiny house developments.
Okay.
But, but if we, I haven't looked at the, I didn't bring with me the drafts that you've sent out. But the present bylaw is a prohibitive bylaw.
Yeah.
It says you may not use any land or building in, in Pownell except as permitted herein.
Yeah.
So if you don't have it in there, it's not permitted.
Yeah, but, but, uh, there, there isn't any, there isn't anything in the bylaw, I don't believe now, that limits the size of a.
Right, a single family or two-family dwellings would accomplish that.
So, so you could have a, you, you, you just wouldn't be able to say, you know, I get, you know, I, I get special consideration for having a, a really small house. It's just you have to get it permitted the same way you would any other house.
Okay, sure.
Um, so, you know.
Right. So we, we'll determine if we have to break it out.
And there's, you know, there's, there's one of those things is like, you know, there's tiny houses on wheels and, you know, do those treated differently and.
Well, that's like a trailer.
It's a trailer.
Yeah, to me, they're, those are, those are, those are like.
It's mobile. Unless it's a bike.
Those are cute. We, uh, we treat those like, like you would probably, uh, you know, a camper.
I think we should zone them all in one place, right at the top of Skippery Road and follow his way. There's some big fields up there.
Yeah, I would love to have like cousins.
We put about a two hundred of those tiny grandma, grandpa houses up there.
I've got at least two hundred cousins.
Perfect.
There was a proposal on North Adams for a tiny house hotel.
Wow.
Fifty units with a common building with dining facilities and a bar and a restaurant and.
How did that go? Did it pass?
It's proposed.
My client chickened out.
I think, um, you know, it, it's, it's interesting concept. I mean, I, I think that, you know, it, people, people got the, the, our average. House size could be bigger and bigger and bigger. And then, you know, somebody came in with a tiny house idea and they're really, really small. I think there's probably, it's probably like a, a, like a small house movement that's needed, you know, maybe like a thousand to twelve hundred square.
I looked, I looked the other day. I just Googled to see what the increase in single-family residential structures from nineteen forty to nineteen.
Oh, really?
Uh, to two thousand twenty. And with the exception of one year, nineteen fifty-nine, houses have always gotten bigger square foot wise. And the average house in the United, the average newly constructed house in the United States right now is something like twenty-six hundred square feet. That's a pretty big house.
Yep.
And high ceilings.
Yeah, I mean.
There goes your energy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could talk a lot about that, but I know that.
Okay.
Uh, well, the topic for another day, but I, I agree. That's a, it's an issue.
This is, uh, very cool. I'm, I'm excited about this.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know that.
All right, so, so that, so now my, my questions for, uh, discussion and, and something, what, the first one is easy. Because you told me and I wanted to make sure I get it right because I did not have it right. Um, and I don't have it right.
Okay, we're looking at this chart here?
You can, or you can look at the bylaw, or you can not look at anything and just tell me. So, um, mobile, mobile home parks, which we have to allow somewhere in Pownell. Um, which are the districts where they are supposed to be allowed? Because there was a, in the old bylaw, there was a conflict between the table and, uh, sections. And I wanna make sure I get it right in both places.
Remember how the, what the conflict was?
Uh, if in one place, I think it said they were allowed in like the rural residential. And in, and in the other place, it was allowed in, you know, village and commercial.
It was, it was supposed to be changed to village only.
So village only?
It was supposed to be changed to village only. I was gonna ask Nelson Brownell how we, if that was just an error on our part. When we changed the bylaws the last time to reflect where mobile home parks should be. Um, my recollection, because it was a pretty long debate, was that it was gonna be village only.
Okay, that, that's, and that's fine. And, yeah, and.
But I, I'm just speaking on my recollection. I'm not speaking on behalf.
I mean, you're talking about a select board, how many years ago?
No, planning commission. It was, it was a planning commission that Jim was on and, uh, Hat Percy and.
Do you remember everything?
Ronnie was on there.
Talking about my scenes. It only makes sense to have a man in the villages. That's where the sewer is.
It was gonna be. Exactly right. And that was ninety percent of the thing, but somebody, somebody was offended by it.
You're gonna have sewer.
Do you remember what you decided, what the.
Well, he, he, he changed his mind about a lot of things.
Oh, okay.
So, and you know, I wanna, I wanna be clear. I mean, one is, you know, the village areas now are, are, you know, fairly extensive. So that does take in a lot of, a lot of land areas. So it's not necessarily overly restricted. But also remember that any mobile home parks that are existing now, you know, can continue to exist.
Existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, I, I don't want people, uh, listening maybe to get the impression that like, you, you, by saying that, you know, you, somebody's gonna go around and start closing down.
No, no.
At a, at a public hearing, that's gonna come up.
Our grandfather did.
And we're ready for it. It happened with the, when we redid the town plan. Word got out that we were gonna close everything down and change everything. And that, we had to explain to them that they're all grandfathered. Yeah, I did read that discrepancy. I forget exactly where it was. I think I did make a note of it, but, uh, it does. And it's worded funny, Jim, too. You don't remember where it is, do you? Because it's, it's.
I, I don't, um.
It's, it's quite definitive in the first part, and then it kind of opens the door in the second part for our, our one, I think. Like special permits or something.
Um, yeah, I can tell you, um, uh, one of the spots where. One of the spots where.
Well, let's go to, to the. Structures. It's good that the chairman of the planning commission knows his way around so well in the.
Yeah, so I think that one of the things that was confusing was in the, in the old land use matrix.
Yeah.
Um, it was listed as not allowed anywhere, right?
That's maybe exactly where it was, yeah.
And that was, um, you know, that's in, in addition to being um, not what's in the text, it's inconsistent with state statutes, so.
Page sixty-three, uh, land, of the land use matrix, mobile home park, RR two, no, village, conditional. RR one, not permitted. So then everything else, and this is what I remember changing it to, just village, as Ronnie had said. And everything else was no, but somewhere in here, in the text, it contradicts that. You're absolutely right. And I think when I looked at it, I think it was more of a mistake. Than trying to open like a special door.
But Jim's question was, where do we want new mobile home parks?
But I think, I, I would vote for village only going forward.
The hook was twenty-five acres. The hook was twenty-five acres, though.
Yeah.
So in most places, you wouldn't have twenty-five acres.
In the village zone.
Right.
That's correct.
You're, so like, in, in um, in the old bylaw, in section five point one, for example, rural residential. Two district, it says, on, uh, five, well, and I might.
Five, one, four, six?
Yeah, it says mobile home parks.
Yeah.
Subject to review under the subdivision regs.
In section eight for this bylaw, consideration should be given to increased density in existing parks or budding areas meeting the requirements. And that is part of the contradiction to just village. So if we could just uh go village here.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make.
Be prepared to defend that in a public hearing, I'm all for it.
I'll make, I'll make that change. So I, I just have to redo my text and table a little bit, but that's not a difficult change.
Right, and we'll have a chance to vote on this as a board.
Isn't there, um. Isn't there an existing trailer park over behind um Barbara Pond?
Yes, there is, yes, yeah. Yeah, there's about six trailers in there.
And the one up here is out of village too.
That's, that's true.
The existing ones, that ain't gonna have any effect on them.
Right, exactly right, they're exactly right, their grandfather.
No, okay.
Pre-existing.
Could, could, okay, let's take the example there, there's one trailer park that is next to the ball field.
Could that trailer park buy the land there and move into the ball field down at the racetrack? I'm talking about the Green Mountain Trailer Park. It's an empty space next to it, is the ballpark.
Is it twenty-five acres?
Well, would have to be twenty-five acres, it's an expansion.
But they're non-conforming now, so if, if they couldn't conform to the twenty-five acre rule, they would not be allowed, I don't think, to make that expansion.
Well, if it's an, if it's an existing use and they want to expand it, then it would be an expansion of a non-conforming use.
It's an existing place there.
And there's, and there's bylaw provisions about how you do that.
It is bylaw provisions for.
For how to do that.
For the conditions you have to meet to do that. It would have to be reviewed by the DRB and meet those standards, yeah.
Okay.
Cause there's water and septic there, that's a bother to me.
Okay.
No bother to me, it's just, it's there.
Water and sewer.
And sewer.
And that's where it ends, right?
Septic goes anywhere.
Yeah, true, true, true.
So the trailer park down there, um, across from Jellies and stuff like that, there is no sewer there.
There's no sewer there.
It ended at Alta Gardens or Green Mountain. That's where it ended.
It ended right where we were just talking about, that trailer park, used to be across from me, right across from Jimmy there.
Yep.
That last trailer park on the side.
Okay, all right.
And why didn't it, why didn't we go down the hill to the one opposite Stewart's?
Why didn't we get down the hill to the hillside house? Why didn't we go down to Stewart's?
Why didn't we provide water and sewer to all the businesses down there?
The one next to the.
It was the money was there.
We don't, there's no sewer in that area.
I know.
I know, he's asking, why did it stop where it stopped?
Well, that's quite a ways from the end of that, cause that's before the racetrack where, where it stops.
I know, we went up a northwest hill.
You know, with all ledge. Now, it always had been, I was talking to young John Armstrong about this just the other day with the hillside house.
Yeah, that's who I talked to.
Yeah, and, and I talked to Nelson about it. He said, actually, we should have, because the money was.
All right, we can't do anything about that. Hindsight's twenty-twenty on where the sewer ends.
But, but where the sewer ends.
We can put that in the bylaw.
I know, but you got an empty ball, you got two empty spaces this side of the racetrack. That could be used.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's, I, they got everything there.
How about a tiny house development?
It's close enough to go on to everything.
This is what we say.
How about a tiny house development?
Doesn't matter, I, I don't know.
Why not?
Sure, why not?
He's making a point here, and it, this, this places that could be.
Trailers were the original tiny house.
Sure, they were, very small.
All right.
Okay.
So we okay on that, at least to get it into the draft, and then we can debate it and, and put it out to public scrutiny.
Yep, I'm good with that.
And see what happens.
Remember that change?
Have we had any, has, has, from your position on the DRB, have there been feelers put out for adding um trailer parks anywhere?
None, we haven't heard of any development in a long, long time.
Yeah.
Now, I don't think since I've been on the planning commission, or certainly the DRB.
So it's not a pressing issue?
But things can become pressing, somebody submits an application.
Hit them off at the pass. When you're, when you're least expect them, they become extremely pressing.
Bad bylaws that are unclear.
We wanna, mostly wanna make sure that the bylaws are clear and reflect reality, so, yeah.
Clear.
Exactly right.
Um, so the next, the next big picture question I had, um, and I think that we've more or less decided that this one's okay. But I wanna double check. So I, uh, we talked about combining the um village and commercial districts. And just have a village district that takes in all of the uses that were allowed in both. Because they were essentially identical.
Same. And that was our discussion when you raised that the first time, and I think we agreed that it would be a good idea to combine those.
There was maybe a little difference, but there wasn't very much. It, I know there was some discussion about, you know, revisiting. The actual extent of the, you know, the commercial districts, but um, for starters, just urging them?
I'm all for it.
Let's do it and see what the map looks like.
We'll do it, see what the map looks like.
And see what the reaction is when we do it.
Okay.
I don't see any reason that anybody should object to that, but I've been wrong before in that.
And we'll call it the, we'll call it village district.
Sure.
Because, because the commercial district nomenclature just implies just commercial. But village implies.
It's mixed.
Mixed. Commercial, residential. Okay. Um, all right, so then the, the big one, and um, that, that I do not have an answer to, and I have done. Nothing in anticipation of, how's that for a prelude?
Yeah, it's great.
Nothing, is the um, is, right now, I believe that most of the um, uh, the racetrack properties in the village district. Eh, if not all of it, and.
You're right.
And so it's, it would be in this new combined district. And so it allows, you know, um, a variety, everything from residential to, you know. Retail to professional offices, services to quote-unquote light manufacturing and warehousing. But there was some discussion, I know, and I think it may be in the, in the plan as well, about carving that area out. And creating a, a, like a combined commercial industrial district um for the track property. And I haven't done anything with that, cause I, I, I have not heard clear direction if, if you guys really wanna go that way or not. Especially given the, you know, the restrictions on the use of the property with all the flood hazard and river corridor stuff.
Well, that, yeah, that's the question, yeah.
But would, excuse me, I'm sorry, but combining those two, would it, would it make it more attractive to developers?
Well, the only thing it would really do, because like I said, the village district, with the way it's owned now, allows almost everything. The only thing it doesn't allow necessarily are the things that are allowed currently exclusively in the industrial district.
In the industrial.
Which are like heavy manufacturing, um, and uh, solid waste management, hazardous waste management facilities. Um, yeah, things like, eh, that's, that's most, so it'd be more like, you know, heavy, you know, more heavy manufacturing. That's um, you know, currently limited to the existing industrial districts, which are um, I think, you know. Like the Mac molding property and then a, a, you know, s- and a, and one other small area.
But commercial also allows for housing too, if I recall.
Um, yeah, oh yeah, uh, the, well, the, yeah, the village, the village district again allows for.
Right.
High-density housing, mixed-use development.
So it'd be a combination village slash commercial.
Yeah, that, eh, as would the rest of the village.
But that's what's happening already.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it.
Well, there, at the track?
Everywhere, where you have, commercial is being folded into a, a village.
Totally, totally understand that, but how, do you wanna segregate heavy industrial, you know?
I don't think, I don't think the racetrack ought to be zoned.
Heavy industrial?
For residentially, I think it ought to be zoned conservation.
Oh, me too, I mean, what.
Well, that's going, that's kinda going the other way.
Yeah.
I know that the owners think, I don't know.
Yeah, they might not go for that one.
Who knows who they are anyway.
Well, I mean, you know, and, you know, you can, you can, can, you can, you can almost say you can zone it what you want, you know? But what it's actually gonna be, the potential is, is gonna be pretty limited. I mean, you, yeah, there, there are places there that are outside of those. Flood areas where you could get, you know, some commercial development and you could get some residential development. But like a, a large complex would be hard to do, I think.
Hasn't something recently been talked about, Jim, without mentioning names? Um, um, a couple of commercial ventures, housing, a little middle-income housing built in there as well. On the northernmost end.
Many times, but uh, the people that own the place don't seem to be interested in too much. I mean, it, it's, well, it's their place to come forth, say, what are we, what are we gonna do with it? Just let it be rotten?
Yeah.
Junkyard full of stuff from Williamstown's buildings, uh, glass and stuff all over the place.
The, the reason I ask that is because if, if we do a combined village slash commercial industrial. Um, but we're not, I, I just wanna make sure that we're keeping the door open. Um, for some sort of development there, as unlikely as that may be.
Haven't the door been open for a long time? Would somebody to come into the door that owns the property? It's final, what, what's the future of the place? It is a really disgusting piece of property right now.
I think, you know, I think that the, you know, the, probably the, the, you know, the, the best potential for cleaning it up is redevelopment.
Right.
That, you know, so the, the question is, you know, what's realistic for redevelopment that would pay for the cleanup on the front end? And that, I think maybe that's the, the, the.
I think it's time for the state to say something about it. Somehow it needs to be condemned. You need to drive in there and take a look at the place. And if they start to put nasty stuff on the outside of it, which is on the backside of it, which no one sees, on the riverside.
They're gonna start doing it on the front, too.
Then, then you're gonna get a scream out. There's gonna be some, why waiting here for somebody to do something, and then we gotta react to it? The door's been open for long enough, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, nineteen, what, nineteen ninety-three or something like that was the last time.
But what leverage do we have?
We don't, that's what we're talking about now. We don't own it.
We don't own it.
We, we, Mr. Sol has been here two or three times, and we've, he's had his grandiose plans, and, and then all of a sudden, the river jumped in there and it kinda squashed everything. And we fought the battle over the uh, the guys are gonna put the burn rubbish and junk in there. If, the longer it stays empty, the more problems we're gonna have. You don't leave empty property like that. It's something bad's gonna happen to it.
What if it were the uh, zone conservation?
Well, there's, there's.
We don't have a conservation zoning district.
We don't.
Why not?
Well, we could have one.
Well, we could, but we haven't.
No, not much in the right time.
We tried to have a conversation about this with Clayton Park, where the people thought that they should go down there and do what they wanted to. And then we moved it into a conservation property, and they still committed to what they wanted. So, I don't, we've tried a lot of things, but I think that these people have been, we've kinda kissed their butts for a long time to do something there. And no one wants to step forward and um, see.
Okay, so our goal is to figure out how to zone that sucker.
Hey, he's got a good point. If you made, cause somebody might say, whoa, you know, we're gonna do something. Somebody needs to come forward and do something, condemn the damn place.
If it were a conservation district, uh, would it allow them to still be dumping rubbish?
Yeah, very good question. I was wondering, right?
I would, I would say no, no.
I would say no.
Who would?
Rubbish right along the river, you know?
A lot of people use the river and uh, I don't know.
A lot of people eat the fish.
Well, now, there were a good forty years there, I.
I don't, we, we've been at this a long time.
I mean, that, that like, you know, the e- existing use of like um, uh, you know, um. Depositing debris or whatever, there, that, that might, that might al- also, you know, exist outside of local, you know, zoning regulations too. I mean, you might, that might be something to talk to the, you know, the Department of Environmental Conservation.
There you go. Now, now, if, if the river jumps in there again, here's what it's gonna be. It's gonna be a lot of glass, it'll be a lot of chairs, there's gonna be a lot of tables. There's gonna be a lot of fire extinguishers, carts, all going down the river, cause they're all on the backside. No one sees it. You have to drive in there and physically look at it.
Yeah, that's all, that's all the deposit, that probably is in the, the river corridor area.
It is.
Whether or not we.
From here to the uh, the window.
Yeah, whether or not we create a river corridor district, it's still the river corridor.
Yeah.
And, and so the state is probably gonna have some legitimate concern about that.
So who would write to them and what would you say?
Well, let's, let's, let me look into that a little bit.
I'm happy to do the letter.
We could talk to the, you know, I could try to find out from somebody in the rivers division at the state.
You can measure the distance between where the stuff is all being thrown out the back window, and it's to that window to the river.
I'll go down and measure with it, too.
Yeah, don't drive in there with the glass all over the place.
Yeah, so that's one to look at, and I, I'll, I can, I'll, I could follow up and.
Is this debris that's originating in Williamstown being trucked up here?
Some of it's been used a little bit now, but it's all been crushed up, and there's two sites there, huge monster sites, and uh. They, they, they have a right of way through my property, so they take some of it out a little bit, but not a lot. I'm hoping maybe they'll put some in the fire department in Williamstown where they're gonna build a fire department.
I know what you're gonna say, by what authority did they bring that in there?
Dump that stuff in there?
Well, they burned it through at Nelson, and, and I called, well, now, I, I called, I called Sol and told him what was going on. And he said, oh, it's all right, Jim, it's all right. Somehow it was between Tam, Nelson, and it was only gonna be there a short time.
And they were gonna move it out.
Two years.
Yeah.
And then it was. Supposedly bought in there to be crushed up. Right. And then taken out. That's it, and it was crushed up. It was left there for a long time in big uh metal and all kinds of bricks and everything. Actually, it's the Brofman Science Center is one of the buildings, and a pretty huge building. And then more came, and uh, then somebody did come in and grind it all up.
And so was getting paid per truckload.
Somebody's been making money on this.
Sure.
Cause they paid a lot of money to get it ground out.
Give it back to the people who brought it to you.
Well, it's gonna go back to uh, Trucking Company that uh, I don't know, the guys that work over there in Williamstown said they were very reliable people. They were hauling all this stuff over here and uh.
I gotta feel it's not gonna end well.
I do business with all those guys in Williamstown and uh.
See, Jim, Jim gets all the news over the lunch counter.
Yes, he does.
Yes, he is, yes, I do.
We need him.
No, they don't, they say, they're just talking to each other, I'm just listening.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Hundred sixty-five million dollar museum.
So, for, for this.
No, that's just, the racetrack's gonna drive us all crazy.
Yes, it is.
All right.
Well, it's, it's the only, it's, it's the only individual piece of real estate in the region that has its own section in the regional plan. So, it's, it's noteworthy for that.
It's good weight of history. And several other things.
So, um, so do you wanna like basically leave it in the newly combined village commercial district for the purposes of at least.
Finishing this.
Presenting it in, in the, the draft?
I agree.
I think that's irresponsible.
Oh, interesting. You think it should be zoned?
I, I think we've.
Just opening that up like that.
We've gotta do better than that.
I hope that he's gonna have somebody look at, at, what I say is, is a problem, it, you, if the river rises again, it's gonna put a lot of stuff in there that we talk about.
If the river rises again?
And there is, it is lying there in the ground. I mean, fire extinguishers, big carts, chairs, all the back windows are broken.
That's all gonna go south.
Roofing, the roofing, uh, the wind has blown the roof tile down there. The big beach, all the stuff is in there. There's two barns full of tires in there, full of old tires. Someone's gonna set them on fire. They've tried a couple of times.
Uh, great, those are nice.
I know, but it's all sits there, no, no one wants to discuss it.
So Sid, what's your thinking?
My thinking is that I think we should create a conservation district and zone it. My thinking is that I think we should create a conservation district and zone it as conservation land. The problem with that is that Solar's is gonna have the right to sue us for. Devaluing his property by making it less developable.
That's exactly what I think, alright.
So, so you know, like, so, you know, Sid Bright knows this better than, than the rest of us, it's like, what? What constitutes a, a taking?
Taking.
And, you know, so you, you can do a regulatory taking under certain, you know, narrow. Um, conditions, like if you're so restricting the, the land that you've taken. Mostly economically viable use, but it is being done to prevent, uh, you know, public harm or a serious, you know. Public, public health and safety hazard, then you, you know, that's something you can do. Um, so you do carefully, but you could do it and, and um, you know, that, that's, but other, otherwise, you know, you, you're kind of.
Hamstrung.
Well, you can, you can, you can severely restrict uses, but you have to leave, you know, some.
You have to leave an economic use.
You have to leave some economic use.
Having, at least in Massachusetts, having a pretty view is an economic use.
Mm-hmm, mm, wow.
So, so without going to the DRB, they've turned that place into a recycling plant.
I know they have. And, and I have told repeated boards of selectmen that they don't have the power to give these permits.
They don't have the authority to do that.
I had Walker down, Walker went down there with me, I had Walker down there twice when they were dumping, and he'd talk to people and they're gonna do this. And it's gonna be, it's gonna leave the grounds, the guys were grinding up there and it was gonna leave the grounds, but it's still. But the owner said, oh, it's okay, Jim.
So do we have a, a leg to stand on here?
Well, I think there's, there's, there's some heavy duty legal work that has to be done if you're gonna try to impose. By zone it conservation and take away some of the economically viable uses that may exist there, I don't know how many there are because of the. Because of the river and its impacts on the property, but, and, and frankly, it's. Requires research and thinking and it's beyond this board to be able to do it.
But this board.
Because some will come in and make, suggest that, you know, what you, what you can't do without compensating financially, the owners is, is say. We're going to turn property into conservation land for the benefit of the community because we wanna conserve the open space.
And all you can do is grow grass.
Right, you can't take that away, right, you can't go to that.
Yeah, you're, you're, cause, you know, then you're, you're not, you're taking it to provide a public benefit instead of prevent a public harm and that's kind of where the.
Sure.
The line in the sand is, so you, you really have to say, you know, the reason that this is being done is because if we don't do it, there's gonna be. You know, imminent peril to the community or, you know.
Not just this community, but down the river.
Know what the standard is in Vermont, but in other states.
I don't think it's well defined.
You have to have, you have to have a study to back up your conclusion.
You'd probably wanna do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, expensive study, probably.
The river group, uh, there could be an issue, uh.
Hura.
Hura, they could make a complaint, uh, they, uh, somebody's probably given an illegal permit more than once. Uh, so a higher authority needs to come in and see what the person in Powell did to give this permit. And it, why is, why does it still exist, this stuff has been here too long.
You clearly need all that before you would change your bylaws to reflect.
We get the ball rolling on something.
Yeah, so what should we do?
The other suggestion was to write a letter to.
Who was that, the environmental?
Environmental.
Well, I, I, I'd have to do a little research to figure out just the right person to talk to.
Sure.
And then probably have somebody come down and, and, you know, take a look at it.
See if we have a case.
Well, you know, I mean, just, just, just quite aside from the zoning thing to, to deal with the debris or the dumping. And see if that's something that is, you know, inconsistent with state rules and regulations.
Black bags down there also.
Yeah.
Berrage bags, yeah.
Sure.
That's something.
Yeah, on the backside, they're dumping them, aren't they?
It certainly seems like somebody should wanna take a look at that, and so I, I'll, I can track down, you know, the right person to.
Do you wanna just, would it help to speak to people at Hura as well?
Sure, yeah.
Well, food for thought, I don't think we're gonna determine that tonight, but you, you were looking for some direction as you prepare a draft.
The only thing was, was like, if you were going to create another district there, then I'd have to create another section of the bylaw, which I could certainly do. But I, I don't know what to do.
We don't know what to do.
Like, the default right now is to leave it in this, in the newfangled village district. Um, o- otherwise, you know, I can create a new district, whatever that might be, but.
We can also, I'm not advocating this.
Every time there was a plan for that thing, they changed what the.
They changed the zone.
You can put industrial there if you want, you can do this if you want.
I saw that.
Come on, we've been doing that for, what, thirty years?
Sid went one-on-one with the lady from Burlington, she was good.
I've been around for, I've been around doing regional planning for over thirty years and I can, I can think back. On a whole, uh, sequence of fascinating development concepts and site plan. Con- conceptual site plans for that property I've seen over the years.
Yeah, property and some other ones.
I've seen, I've seen, I've seen, um, I've seen like equestrian centers and I've seen. Um, shopping plazas and I've seen conference centers and of course the old casinos.
Sure.
We were that close to doing about four things that you said, and Mr. Mr. Teasor's raising the price, more money he thought, we were close. He made a lot of money on that place.
Ronnie's right, they kept changing the zoning every time somebody had an idea.
Could've done anything they wanted with it, they could've had anything.
Okay, so I propose that we leave the racetrack in the commercial.
In the village for now.
In the village commercial, but at the same time do this other.
My point was it can be changed prior to the end, it can be changed after we adopt a new bylaw, you can change a section. Add a section.
Amend a section.
For a really good reason, so it doesn't look like some kind of spot zoning, like come on down, you know, we'll accommodate you. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, may- maybe it's a, maybe it's a project for your next municipal planning grant is to, you know.
Have, yeah.
Look at, look at that property and figure out what the long-term plan for it should be.
They've had all kinds of studies for it.
Oh, yeah. Nothing, we've had a lot of studies, we had a thirty thousand dollar study.
What did Williams College say to do with it?
Basically entertainment and light manufacturing.
Yeah, they were gonna, they were gonna have a butcher that butchery there.
Well, it was a lot of house, yeah, one of many things, we should've had the Dorset horse shelter that was.
Oh, I didn't know that, that were a boon of the, that area.
Oh my god, motel space was what bothered everybody, Williamstown didn't like.
Well, they all have four hundred thousand dollar motor homes, I don't know why they need motels.
I know, I know.
Oh, maybe those are just for the horses.
They had the barns, they had everything.
So let's, let's do that, village for now, and then we'll continue to kick that around.
Okay, okay, that's the consensus of the board.
Do we need a motion?
He's officially opposed, I, I know.
No, but the motion carries for five to one.
Well, well, hang on, if, if you can tell us, uh.
I don't have any short-term solution, like my viscera just tells me.
That that's the thing to do.
You don't wanna have that track be village commercial.
Well, I think, is, I think, I think we said at the meeting back in November, one of the, maybe one of the, the. The, the. Problems with having it zoned in a unrealistic way is a, is a. The attention in Powell always seems to turn to that property is like, that, some big development there is gonna be.
The salvation.
Yeah, it's like if we keep, you know, it's like, maybe if we looked at, the, more like, you know. Mixed use village development in other part, in Powell Center and Powell Village and North Powell, maybe. In aggregate, that would have more of.
Would take some of the emphasis off of.
But it's like, it's, just like I said, I mean, just because, you know, I've only been here half as long as you, Jim, but, but it's like, boy, every. Every few years comes along, you know, the grand plan for that property and.
Now, the elephant in the room it is, but now it's the white elephant.
Yeah.
And we're stuck with it, and it, it's, it's, needs to be something, the more, when you go look at it.
Barbara, why don't you make a motion that, that the racetrack be zoned village commercial? Go ahead, and?
Sid wants to say no.
No, no, and we'll re- we'll reconsider, we will keep thinking about it and reconsider when an opportunity presents itself, if ever.
Or we can leave it, leave, disable it until we gets maybe some people.
Jim needs a little guidance on preparing a section, so I would entertain a motion to leave this as village.
And slash commercial.
Jim's sake, I'll second it.
Uh, any, any more discussion, I think we've had the discussion, we know what direction we'd like to go in. Uh, are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Okay, then, that just made my job easier, so.
Took a while.
Took us much too long to do that, but.
Well, I don't, you know, that's, that's.
I hadn't even considered that.
It's a, it's a big issue, like I said, you know, every time the regional plan comes around and the, the land use section of the regional plan comes around. That's just a property that just doesn't neatly fit in any category, so it's all, it's not an easy, it's not an easy nut to crack.
There's people in Powell and waiting from waiting and waiting for somebody to come here and dissuade the magic wand again.
Yeah, and it's not gonna happen.
The, the, the tough thing is that it's, it's, it's absolutely, it's absolutely beautiful piece of property.
It is, oh my god.
I do remember, I was a little kid, I remember the farm, was there, I remember going by it, holy mackerel.
But I think then, it, it, something has to happen and that we have to find ways. To move forward.
And they may be rather bold ways to move forward.
If there's toxic waste.
There is.
Being dumped behind there, then we should, we should get it declared a brownfield.
Yep, yeah.
Not really, that's not a serious.
Some needs to happen.
Well, it's big, I mean, if somebody comes in with a, with a, you know, a redevelopment proposal, then probably a. A brownfield assessment is warranted and we're happy to help you out there.
And, and if somebody comes in with a viable development proposal.
I'll eat my ass.
The planning, well, maybe, but the planning commission can go through a process to rezone it very quickly. And the town can react to it very quickly.
Never seen that happen in any county, have we?
Salmo's a classic. Salmo was sitting there empty.
So I'll, so my, my, my plan is, I, you know, I, there's a lot of little pieces now, but um, I, I think I have. All of the pieces I need to, to finish the first draft of the puzzle. And so I, I will try at least a week in advance of your next meeting to get you a full draft. The only thing that we haven't talked about that I need to play around with a little bit is the definitions. So you have a section on definitions now, which is generally pretty good, but there's a few things that we've added and tweaked that I need to.
Sure.
And I'll, I'll highlight it, obviously, anything that's added or changed in the definitions.
Well, you're gonna try and find somebody at the state that might be able to give us guidance on that property and zoning it?
Yeah, the, I'd probably be able to do a better job of getting somebody from the state to look at the environmental.
Right.
Side of it, um, as far as the, like, you know, they, they'll, they'll wanna keep a wide berth from offering you any. Clear input on local zoning decisions, you know, they'll say that's really up to you, that here's, they'll say, here are the constraints, here are the issues.
But it would help to know, know that, it would help to know what.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, you know, I, I, I'm not, I have not taken a tour of the backside of that property to see what's there. So that's kinda news to me, so I'll, I will do my best to, uh. To get the right people to take a look at it and, um.
I was gonna say, did we answer all your thirty thousand foot questions?
Those are all like, those are all my big picture questions.
Excellent, so our takeaway is to go back and read that section six and especially.
Read the whole bylaw.
Six point five on, well, we have been reading the sections.
Kind of, I mean, been through, um, everything, we even went through all of section eight, which was a really long section and I, we got through that successfully. But when, when we get through it, we'll, we will go through it from page one all the way through to the end, but. Since that section six, five, or whatever it is, the river quarter section is a whole new thing, take a, take a. A, a close look at that.
Okay, yep, yeah, six point, uh, two and four, alright, and then I'm, you know, I'm, I'm intrigued by this conservation zone. So, uh, let's find out as much as we can find out.
We're not doing much from right now.
Jim, thank you, we're gonna meet the third week of February, so.
It's on my calendar, I think.
Is it?
Yeah. Okay, is that's a, I almost think, is it twenty-first, is it?
One, two, it'd be the eighteenth, February eighteenth, it'd be the third Tuesday.
Jim, I live up on, in a, um, this, in a dead zone. So I had a lot of trouble in my, and it, so would it be possible for you to just send it, instead of sending it to the town, you know?
Somebody can highlight with a camera.
Me, uh, if you could send it to my home, you know?
I'm disappointed.
Just, um, write it on the bottom of that house.
And I've called him a couple of times, you know, we turn the calls.
All, all smoking areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, I say every time, you know, I called him a couple of times and say, every time we went to planning, he'd always mention us to, come on, please. Come on, knock.
Mike, are we done?
No, we're not quite done, thank, but thank you, Jim, I think Jim's all done. So now we just need to, uh, just, uh, quickly here, um, I'll just cover the mail, this is very brief. There's a permit issued for wastewater system and potable water supply permit for Armstrong Inc. Seven, seven, five, seven, US Route seven, Powell, Vermont, I believe that's the hillside house.
Yes, it is.
So they went through the proper permitting and, um.
Looks like it could be so.
Wastewater system and got all that fixed, alright, Bennington County Regional Commission, we talked about this a few minutes earlier. The BRCRC is sending a letter on behalf of the collaborative Montescutney Prevention Partnership MAP. MAPP and other members of the Bennington County Regional Prevention Partnership for substance. Substance misuse prevention that are able to provide technical support to municipalities regarding. Commercial cannabis legislation currently in development, it impacts the planning commission not greatly, I think. But, um, we may have talked a little bit about health and things like that in our town plan, I, I don't recall.
Yeah, I think one of the things in that really was pointing to the VLCT proposal, and, and I, I ran it by, um, some legislators. Legislators, he said it's really still very much up in the air, which direction the legislation's gonna go on this stuff, but. There, there is this notion of like whether towns are opting or if they have to opt out, so like, can you? Can, can you get a situation where you don't allow cannabis retail in your town unless you agree to it? Or is it by default unless you don't agree to it, so that's kinda the VLCT and they say if you do allow it in your town, then. There ought to be, um, local taxes that would benefit you.
Right, I'll bet.
That's all, that's all.
I'm loving it at the hillside house.
Okay.
So I think we should have a zone CC, commercial cannabis.
Yeah, sure.
And we just have it all in one.
Won't be at the racetrack.
No, not at the racetrack.
Nobody wants to see all that flooded, alright, I have no other business, does anyone know?
Motion, will you adjourn?
A second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you all.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, thank you, Jim.